All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 9, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us this evening. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Council members Baranco.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Jensen.
McCorris.
Here.
Nitzer.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Right, with us to give our invocation tonight, we welcome back Bishop Constance Hagmeyer with South Dakota Synod of the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. So we thank you for being back with us, Bishop. We'd ask that you stand for her invocation and then stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Sure. Yes, thank you for having me. It's a privilege to be here again, and I would invite you to please join me for a word of prayer. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, bless these public servants in the government of Sioux Falls, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life through your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks Bishop Hagmeyer for the invocation. We'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Let's move ahead to item 25, which is the approval of our regular agenda. Look for a motion there, please.
Move approval?
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Before we jump ahead to our regular agenda, just a reminder that public input is limited to five minutes per person on all items for final adoption. Other items are three minutes apiece, and for our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item that we're considering at the time only. So with that being said, we'll move on to our next item.
Item 26, new 2022 retail on-sale liquor license for Plaza Azteca Sioux Falls Incorporated, Plaza Azteca Mexican Restaurant, 3500 West 69th Street. CUP not required pending final inspections for health and building services. Item 27, new 2022 retail wine license for Covert Arsenals LLC, 434 East 8th Street. Item 28, new 2022 retail wine license and 2022-23 malt beverage license for Vitamin Cottage Natural Food Markets Incorporated, 2601 South Louise Avenue, Suite 300. CUP not required pending final inspections for health and building services. Item 29, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Best LLC, 101 South Phillips Avenue, Suite 101. CUP not required. Item 30, new 2022 retail liquor license for Landscapes Management Company LLC, Prairie Green Golf Course, 600 East 69th Street. CUP not required. Item 31, new 2022 retail liquor license for Landscapes Management Company LLC, Elmwood Golf Course, 2604 West Russell Street. CUP not required. Item 32, special one-day liquor license for T-Slide Incorporated to be operated at 480 East 69th Street for a wedding reception on August 6, 2022. And item 33, special one-day liquor license for Pave LLC to be operated at 8th and Railroad Center parking lot, 401 East 8th Street for a concert on August 27, 2022.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I am here to answer any questions that you have on items 26 through 33.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on 26 to 33? All right, council, any questions for Jamie here?
Move approval?
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. Discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Move to our next item, please.
Item 34, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 30, ordinances, resolutions, motions, and other documents requiring council approval by requiring an annotated agenda. This item was referred to the Operations Committee at the council meeting of April 13, 2022, with instructions to report to the council no later than the council meeting of July 19, 2022. Sponsors, council members Breckie and Starr. And Mayor, if I can speak to this.
Go ahead, Tom.
Mayor, this, as noted, it was first read on April 13, or first read the week prior to April 13. Second reading was the 13th. It was deferred, referred to the Operations Committee for a little further analysis. In the Operations Committee, there was a recommendation to approve the ordinance with a minor amendment to specify that annotations would be for resolutions and ordinances. However, there's a companion piece, and in terms of a resolution that updates the City Council Policy and Procedures Manual, which is not coming forward until August 2. So the request here is to defer this item until August 2, so that the resolution and this particular ordinance can be adopted presumably on the same evening. What this would do is ensure that, passage of this will ensure that the background and objective statement that's submitted for each agenda item will be posted on the agenda itself, and as will be seen with the Policy and Procedures Manual, there'll be several additional annotations put on the agenda to make it more, what I would say, consumable for the public and for the council.
Got it. All right, thanks, Tom. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I think this is a great move forward. I think that Janet Breckie, former city councilor Janet Breckie, worked long and hard to get this where it's at. It should have been put on the agenda a really long time ago. I've mentioned before that I believe that the agendas are very complicated. Nobody really understands them if they just read them on face value, and sometimes even when you open up the documents, you have to go through several pages before you even know what it is. It's a good move for transparent government. What is disappointing is that I don't understand why this was deferred. Should have just passed it, and then if you wanted to make some more changes to it after the new council came on and the operations thing, you certainly could have done that. I don't understand why we would drag our feet on transparency. I do understand why you drag your feet on transparency, but that's a whole other thing. Anyway, you need to move forward really on a lot of stuff being more transparent. For instance, you said that you're deferring this to discuss other things. One of the things that I have mentioned before is that if somebody is incapable of coming to a city council meeting, whether they're a shut-in or they have ADA, disability, can't get a pair of transit ride, et cetera, et cetera, you should include that they should be able to do telephonic. You know, they'd have to call ahead of time, the city clerk, and let them know that they wanted to speak on an item ahead of time. It wouldn't be just calling up the number during the meeting and saying, "I want to talk." But I think that would be a great move in transparency. You know, having them set up an appointment ahead of time, you know, that so it wouldn't be abused. Like I said, the council calls in a lot. I was just mentioning before the meeting, to Sierra over there, that councils used to always come to the meeting. Nobody called in. It was, and then when COVID hit, all of a sudden it happened. So that's something you should consider when you're coming to operations. It would be a very nice thing to do. Like I said, it shouldn't be for everybody. It should be only for those who can't make it here or have difficult making in here. You know, our next item is about public transit, and we all know that the public transit system is terrible in Sioux Falls. Its hours are very limited, and it's difficult for people to come and speak at these meetings if they don't have the proper transportation. So that's one thing. And you should open up a lot more stuff. I think that when it comes to annuated agenda, there should be a lot more stuff put on. I think all board meetings should be recorded. I think anybody should be able to go onto YouTube or on the city website and see any board meeting. We built a brand-new facility over here. We spent a lot of money on it. I know that they have the setup, the technology. They can record any meeting. It's not that hard. It's pretty much pressing a button, and that would be another thing that you should consider. We should try to be as transparent as possible. As I have mentioned in the past, transparency in government, whether it's on a local level, a national level, doesn't matter. It saves taxpayers millions of dollars. And on top of that, it saves you guys a lot of headaches, because if a constituent ever calls you and says, "Well, I didn't, I don't understand, I didn't understand this part in the agenda," and blah, 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 you can always say, "Hey, it was posted correctly. We had an annuated agenda. This is what it means. This is, you know, it was there." And they'd be like, "Oh, okay. Thank you for letting me know that." And instead of going, "Yeah, that's kind of hidden from you. Yeah, we talked about it behind closed doors. Yeah, somebody else kind of made the decision." You know, it's, transparent government is always a good idea. I've never heard an argument against it. I've never heard anybody say a bad thing, and as once I said at a meeting, I have never heard of any local governments in South Dakota ever getting in trouble because they were too transparent.
Anyone else to speak on this tonight? All right, can we get a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sale.
I'm moved to defer to August 2.
Second.
Starr. All right, motion to defer by Sale, seconded by Starr. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item?
Item 35, first reading in ordinance revising Section 124.012 of the city code that provides for Sioux area metro transit areas. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, August 2, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
Jeff, good evening.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us here. Jeff Eckhoff, Planning and Development Services. I'm coming tonight to you for the first reading of an ordinance to allow kids to ride free on public transit. Sandra Belcock is out of town, or he'd be here, but he will be here for the second reading. And Brent Switzer from our staff is here if you have specific questions about transit that I'm not able to answer. I want to provide just a very brief history. This is, this is an idea that's been around for a while, that's had some time to be discussed and mature. It was back in November of 2021, there was a Breakfast Club meeting amidst the different entities, as you know, get together. Counselor Sale was there, and Superintendent Staven and Cynthia Mickelson, who was chair of the school board at the time, asked about kids riding free on transit. Shortly after that, the directors and the mayor had their kind of off-site visioning day, and the mayor, and then at that time, introduced this whole concept of kids and families and being the focus of moving forward and how to make the town livable and attractive for kids and family. At that time, this kind of dovetailed into that. In March, I went to the PTAB board meeting and introduced it, said this is something the mayor would like you to consider, and put it into the agenda, the discussion for that. It appeared on the agenda for the next two months at PTAB, where they discussed it, talked about it, had input amongst themselves, and then in June, at their meeting, they took it, they had an official public hearing, took a vote, and approved a motion to recommend that the council move forward with the concept of kids riding free. Two things about the ordinance. Number one, transportation should not be a barrier to participation. Kids that not only getting to school, but being able to participate in after-school activities, which for a lot of these kids is key to keeping them in school and keeping them engaged. So transportation should not be a barrier, number one. Number two, this is a way to build ridership, right? You get kids riding when they're young, they'll build that habits into it. Bren came to us from Brookings Transit. Now, granted, it's a different system, but they use their public transit system for preschoolers to get this preschool, and that ingrains those habits and the ability to ride, and so we look at it as a way to build future ridership. Like all public transportation, ridership is down significantly amongst kids and youth, and we think this is a way to bring that back. We already have Freedom Passes in the summer where they ride free. We accept the school passes, and we allow them to ride free, so the dollar impact, it's an estimate, because we don't always separate who's got a Freedom Pass and who doesn't. But Sam estimated the overall budget impact is maybe $25,000 on fare income, so it's not significant. We think the opportunity to build ridership and to provide that service to the youth of our community far outweighs the cost that it might be. So with that, I'm certainly available for questions.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 35 tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. This is way past due. I talked to some people who have been pushing the city for this. They told me they've been working on this for a decade. I look at this as economic development, getting kids, getting used to riding the bus, getting to their part-time jobs. We know what the economy is like. We know that a lot of lower-income kids, they help their parents out with rent, food, lots of things. You guys know this, a lot of you are involved with certain groups. It's a wash. It's not going to cost us anything. Real, I mean, we're already running the buses, they're already going. We can allow the kids to ride for free. Kansas City, they do it, I think it's an employment-based thing. They programmed it. It was a test that they did. It worked so well that they have implemented it. They taxed the local businesses, I think, to pay for it, or some kind of thing. I think Rapid City has done this for three years now to help out the school district. I actually contacted Cynthia Mickelson a couple of months ago about it and said, "You really need to work on this with the council and help out the school district." And I'm glad to see that it's in motion, because it is actually a very, very positive thing. Where I am disappointed is that the council didn't bring this forward. I'm not going to say you guys currently, you're new to the job, you probably weren't even aware of this was going on. It should have been brought forward a long time ago by the council. This is a great thing. One of the things that I looked at, the five-year capital plan was a little disgusting. Forty-three percent of the capital plan is being spent on roads and road maintenance. Obviously, that's something that's needed. One percent is being spent on public transit. And ironically, in the first four years of that capital plan, in the transit thing, very little is being spent. About half of that money is being spent in the fifth year, once this administration is done. So that could be changed by the next mayor, administration. We need to spend more on public transit. We need to expand the hours. We need to expand the training. We need a total overhaul of the system in Sioux Falls. One of the biggest complaints that we hear from people who move here from larger cities, who are used to riding public transit, is our public transit sucks, and they say it repeatedly. And I don't understand a city, the largest city in South Dakota, where we don't run a bus system seven days a week, we don't run it late at night, or later at night, and we don't, we don't, we don't run it in the entire city. It's baffling to me, and we spend millions and millions on roads. Something to think about.
Anyone else tonight, public input on this item? All right, not seeing any. Council, you have any questions for Jeff on this? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of questions for Director Eckhoff. One in the weeds and one kind of more philosophical. So when this was drafted, it looks like we're trying to patch it together, because we talk about children 10 and under being free in the existing ordinance, and then we talk about children 11 to 18, you know, with the Freedom Pass and some of those school ID or a Freedom Pass. I mean, wouldn't it make sense to put those together now that we're going to allow people under 18 to do that? Have you got a copy or I can?
Yeah, no, I just.
The clerk pull up?
Let me take a look at what you're saying. So are you talking about the, so third line down, children 10 years and under, it has to do whether they're accompanied by an adult or not?
That's what we're doing different, is that they have to be the adult.
Right.
Okay, so it needs, it does need the two lines?
There's a differentiation. It used to be five and under, need to be accompanied. Now it's 10 and under, then 11 to 18 are the ones that can ride with, unaccompanied.
Okay, just a big jump from five to 10 in who we allow to ride unaccompanied, and out-of-control nine-year-olds are a problem in my house, so I totally understand what we're doing. The other question is, because PTAB did this back in January, on Thursday last week, the MPO, or the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Sioux Falls, of federal transportation plans, state and cities represented, we didn't add this to the transportation plan for 2023 as we were moving forward. Was there a reason that we didn't include it in the plan and look for federal funds as part of doing this?
In the MPO plan?
Yeah.
I can't speak to that. I don't know if Brent has an answer for that either. That's a good question for Sam. It actually did, it was approved by PTAB in June.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is it, why we don't communicate internally of what we're doing, because I don't regularly follow what the PTAB board does. I should probably more, but with 60-some boards, it's hard to keep track of all of them by the time they're there. But this should have been included with our master transportation plan for 2023. That's the reason we have an MPO, is to look, is a federal requirement to why we put these plans together of what we're doing, and when we don't, you know, something as important as this, and there's potential federal funds that could cover the cost of doing this, we didn't communicate with ourselves.
Right. I'll check into it, follow-up with you.
Thank you. Mr. Feeney, CCOG would be the first place probably to start to what got included and what didn't get included.
Certainly. Thank you.
Other questions tonight, council, on this item for Jeff? Go ahead. Counselor McCorris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this forward. Think it's a great idea. And tonight, I just want to really share, ask two questions, and maybe you could prepare some information for the next, at the second reading. Number one is, I appreciate you sharing the budget impact, $25,000 approximate fare impact. Could you provide us at the next meeting, just so the public could see, a total fare impact for the bus system and what piece of the pie? So for example, what's the total amount brought in by bus fares? What percentage of that is brought in by this specific demographic? Just so we can see the whole picture as we're looking at this, that'd be great. Secondly, I'm just wondering if there's any thought to looking at objective data to, I completely agree, this is a huge deal for children, after-school activities and stuff like that. I think it's also a really easy thing for us to pat ourselves on the back and say, "Hey, look what we're doing for kids." I guess my question is, how are we objectively going to analyze it a year from now or two years from now to understand, did we increase school attendance because of this? Did we get more kids to school on time? Did we get more kids to participate in after-school programs because they had better transportation? So don't expect an answer tonight, but just, is there anything that we could do on the front end to set up something to gather data over the next year, the next two years, to help us understand, did this make a difference in helping children get to school and also participate in after-school recreational opportunities?
So we've not had a really great system to collect that type of data. I mean, we just, we know what the number of high school ridership has declined from a high of about 70,000 to about 20,000, and that's rides, so it's, it could be two, if you transfer, that's two rides within a trip and so forth. We have invested in fare counters and mobile ticketing, and some of those items will help us collect better data on who's riding, where they're going. And so that, some of that, I think their contracts are out for that, would be installing that technology in the coming months, and that'll help us collect better data, but that's probably going to be more baseline than it is where, you know, where we've been since then.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Other questions for Jeff tonight? All right, Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the presentation and the program, and I would throw out to those that are watching tonight, I've heard from quite a few constituents about their overwhelming support for this, which I can't imagine why you wouldn't be. But I think Counselor McCorris asks excellent questions where I think it'd be neat to see or we need to see, as we get months and that down the road, have some questions answered and the statistics and whatever info we can go to, just to see what kind of an impact it's making and go from there. So, but anyway, happy to support it, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Baranco.
I think this is, I agree, a really good idea. One thing that I've heard from some constituents is that when families are using public transportation for grocery shopping, trying to get across, get a solution to the idea of food deserts and food insecurity, that there is a limitation on the number of bags or grocery bags for riders. I know that in a crowded bus situation, we can't allow people to have unlimited bags or we'll have fewer humans, but if there are routes where the ridership is not overwhelming, and those routes are, have pick-up and drop-off points near grocery stores, I'd like to know if there's any chance of exploring relaxing that bag limit to enable riders to use grocery stores and use public transportation access healthy foods.
Do you know, Brent, if there's a limit on? You just got on my wheelhouse there.
Brent Schweitzer, Transit Program Coordinator. I think the biggest challenge to that wouldn't be so much as the number of bags in the room, but the time element. And when you're on a fixed route system and you're working to maintain that, that consistency on time, that's probably where the biggest challenge would come in.
Let's see. Okay, well, thank you.
Other questions tonight for city staff before we go to second reading? All right, I'd look for a motion. That'd be a motion to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, August 2.
So move, McCorris.
Second.
Starr.
All right, motion by McCorris, seconded by Starr. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Next item?
Item 36, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 5500 East 18th Street from the LW Livework and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density and C3 Commercial Community Districts, number 16590-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, August 2, 2022. Private applicant CR Lloyd Associates Incorporated, Luke Wheatgriff.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Lloyd Companies. The owner is the Senior Citizen Services Incorporated. It's located east of South Falls Avenue and north of East 18th Street, just west of Dolly Farm Target. It's about 10.06 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to construct a four-story mixed-use building along the north side of East 18th Street. Will pretty much mirror the building that currently is being constructed on the south side of 18th Street. And then as you start going to the north, they're looking at constructing six two-story apartment buildings.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 36? Counselor, any questions for Jason here?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. Mr. Bieber, are there any requirements for affordable housing, accessible housing as part of the apartment complexes, this facility, or how is that working?
There's not specific requirements for that. I'm assuming they're going to do something similar of what they've done kind of south of 18th Street, north of Rosa Parks School. I don't believe those are accessible housing units. Second reading, though, I can get that information for you, if they're looking to add any of those in there.
Thank you.
Other questions on this item?
Move approval?
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on it then.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-seven, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located various locations, generally located south of West Forty First Street, east of South Ellis Road, north of West Vista Park Street and west of future South Grenell Avenue, from the RR Single Family Residential Rural and AG Agriculture to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and CN Conservation Districts, number 16612-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Private applicants, multiple individual owners.
The applicant here is the city of Sioux Falls. The owner are various property owners within the Prairie Meadows subdivision. It's located at the southeast corner of West Forty First Street and east of South Ellis Road. It's about forty-two point seven acres, quite a few properties within that subdivision. And the purpose of this rezoning is we're looking to zone these properties that we recently annexed into the city as single family. And then there's some areas of conservation that the city currently has some detention ponds on.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on thirty-seven? Counsel, questions for Jason here? Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2?
So moved, Sale.
Second, McCourice.
Motion by Sale, seconded by McCourice. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-eight, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located fourteen nineteen North Barfield Avenue from the RD1 Residential Duplex and Twin Home District to the O Office District, number 16630-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Private applicant Lloyd Companies on behalf of Grant Waschnuck, Scott Blount.
The applicant here is Scott Blount with Lloyd Companies. The owner is Bauer Holdings. It's located south of West Russell Street and east of North Kiwanis Avenue, just south of the Arena Motel. It's about point five five acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing an office building on the first floor and then some apartments on the second floor.
All right, anyone from the public wants to speak on thirty-eight tonight? Questions for Jason here, council?
Move approval?
Second call.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-nine, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East Fifty Seventh Street and east of South Dubuque Avenue from the LW Live Work District to the CN Conservation District, number 16632-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Private applicant Signature Companies LLC, Clint Ackerman.
The applicant and owner here is Brady Hyde. It's located south of East Fifty Seventh Street and west of South Ratliff Avenue, excuse me. It's about six point three nine acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to rezone for some designated drainage.
All right, anyone from the public who would like to speak to thirty-nine? Any questions on this one, council? For a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2?
So moved.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Sale, discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Next item?
Item forty, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East Arrowhead Parkway and west of Six Mile Road from the C4 Commercial Regional District to the O Office and RA3 Apartment Residential High Density Districts, number 16648-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July, correction, it should read Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Private applicant Signature Companies LLC, Clint Ackerman.
The applicant and owner here is also Clint Ackerman. It's located north of East Arrowhead Parkway and west of South Six Mile Road. It's about five point six three acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing an office building on the office lot, some retail in the center still, and then a large apartment complex on the RA3 portion.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty? Any questions on this item, council?
Move approval?
Second call.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole, and that's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-one, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property, property located north of I-90 and east of North Cliff Avenue from the AG Agriculture District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 16653-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Private applicant Van Busker Company, Steve Van Busker.
The applicant here is Steve Van Busker. The owner is Jim Sukup. It's located north of I-90 and east of North Cliff Avenue. It's about eighty-two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing a light industrial development.
Anyone from the public who would like to speak on item forty-one? All right, council, any questions on forty-one for Jason? Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2?
So moved, Cole.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Cole and seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-two, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West Twelve Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the O Office District, number 16663-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Private applicant Alan Holmes Incorporated, Douglas Allen.
The applicant owner here is Doug Allen. It's located south of West Twelve Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about twelve point three five acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing some residential compatible storage units on the lot.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on forty-two here tonight? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Evening, Tony Wilburg. The question, I have two questions on this. I was told to come back at a zoning meeting. Will there be like a privacy fence put around my property when they put this commercial property in? The second question is, will the buildings be facing away from my property? So there's less traffic right along mine?
So, what we'll do is, we'll ask Jason to answer those questions. And if he don't get the answers you're looking for, he can chat with you after we're done voting on this. It's just the first reading, which means we'll vote on it a second time on, likely on August 2. And so, if you don't have any other questions, you can take a seat. We'll see if we can address those and then, yeah.
The plan for the applicant is to face the building. So if you kind of turn this thing, the north is this way. The buildings would be facing east and west. In that green area, that's the required buffer yard. That would be around all sides of that. So they would be required a buffer yard depending on what they're buffering against. But typically, those do include berms or fences and landscaping around there. And I can also talk to the gentleman after the meeting and, and put him in touch with Doug Allen if there's some specific things that they would like to work out. Sometimes those work.
That would be great. Is there other public input on this item here? All right, councilors, do you have questions for Jason then on this? Counselor Starr?
Yes. Jason, tell me what a buffer yard would include in this spot other than the, the berm? Would it include a fence or can we add conditions to, to require fencing to, to face Tony's, Mr. Wilburg's property?
Yeah, you can add conditions as part of the rezoning. We've done that before. It just depends on which one his property is, and I'll talk to him afterwards. Kind of in that, if you look just north of here, that kind of L shaped white building, I believe that's more of a commercial use, so we wouldn't, there wouldn't be required buffering to that. There are two or three single family homes that are adjacent up there. Those would require buffering. And then Doug Allen controls everything to the south and then everything to the east. So if you look at this zoning map, there's some apartments on the east are future apartments. And then that existing RS, single family, he'd obviously have to buffer towards that also.
Thank you. Thank you for working with him.
Other questions for Jason here?
Move approval?
Sounds good.
Second, Starr.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Starr. That's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-three, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one fifty-three, annexation policies. The Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
Is Jason doing this one? Okay. Give us one minute here.
Can somebody please get their Jeopardy music out on the phone for us?
I'll just sing.
I apologize, Jeff was supposed to be here, so I don't know if something happened.
Okay.
What, but we'll check with them, but I, but these Jason are prepared to present on it.
We can vote to defer them to our next meeting.
That would be.
Yeah, I think we should, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so our city staffer must have had an emergency, is not able to make it to present, it'd be the next two items. So I would like to recommend that we would defer those to our August 2 meeting. But before that, I'd ask for anyone who's here to speak on this one? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to defer.
Move, move, move to defer to August 2nd, McCourice?
Second call.
All right, motion by McCourice, seconded by Cole to defer to our August 2 meeting. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that deferral passes six to zero and item forty-four then?
Item forty-four, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one fifty-seven, subdivisions, subchapter, concept plan. The Planning Commissioner recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
All right, I'd ask for the same preference to defer to before doing that. Anybody here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Someone want to make a motion, please?
Move to defer to August 2?
Second call.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Cole to defer this to the second. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCourice.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item forty-five, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, directing submission of an initiated measure to prohibit the construction or permitting of new slaughterhouses within the city limits to a vote of the electors of the city at the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Sponsors or council members, Sale and Jensen.
Okay, Mayor and council members, I'm Tom Greco, the city clerk. So, the purpose of tonight's presentation is basically to present the petition to the governing body in accordance with SDCL nine dash twenty dash four. So I'll provide some background here. A petition was registered with the city clerk's office on April fifteenth, 2022, and by July eighth, seven hundred and forty petition sheets were submitted. Six hundred and seventy on July seventh and seventy on July eighth. The petition was evaluated by, by my office per state law and administrative rules and found to contain the sufficient number of signatures per SDCL nine dash twenty dash one. So the required number of signatures is six thousand eighty-nine and per administrative rule, we stopped counting once that number was met. The petition was validated on Monday, July eleventh. That's when we reached that number and the sponsor and council was notified as well as a press release was issued. The challenge period established by SDCL twelve dash one dash thirteen ended yesterday, July eighteenth, at 5:00 PM. No challenges were submitted. So because this petition was found to be valid, the council is required by statute to, and I quote, "submit the question to the electors at the next annual municipal election or the next general election, whichever is earlier." Certainly, the general election is earlier, but there is also a provision that states, and I quote, "The municipality shall certify the ballot language to the county auditor by the first Tuesday in August of the year of the general election, unless an extension has been granted." In our case, we have two auditors, Lincoln and Minnehaha. So an exception, or an extension has been granted in writing by both counties, allowing for a second reading on August 2nd. The language, which is before you right now, would be effective on August 8th. So, that's when it would be submitted to the county auditors. Administrative rule prescribes the format of a ballot question, and in this case, it's reflected in paragraph one of the proposed ordinance from the instructions, which you can see under paragraph one, the instructions which begin with the following, down through the yes and no vote. So again, that's prescribed by administrative rule. Certainly, in this case, the city attorney provided the city attorney's explanation. So the council tonight is considering an action by ordinance. We do it by ordinance because the city charter requires all actions related to the conduct of elections be by ordinance. As I noted in the background statement that, that accompanied this agenda item, the action before you is procedural in nature and I recommend you set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2. So on August 2nd, passage of the ordinance will direct me to submit the language to the auditors per state law. Again, it's a procedural action tonight, just setting the date of second reading, but ultimately, you'll be fulfilling your obligation to submit it to the electors. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Thanks, Tom. We'll move into public input on this, but just a reminder, we won't be taking public input on the merits of this project, pros, cons. This is about submitting the petitions to a vote of the public. So if you're here to talk about pros, cons, like this project don't, that's not what we're discussing tonight. So, you're welcome to come forward for public input about the procedural elements of this.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Father Peter Smith. I am the pastor of Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church here in Sioux Falls. We own land across East Benson Road where this facility is proposed. I'm here to support the idea of putting this to the voters for simple reasons. This has impacted our parish, this entire issue considerably. We purchased this land because our parish is growing. We purchased this land because of its visibility, its access, and with the intention of building a facility that is deliberately Greek Orthodox in its design, the first one to be built in South Dakota. We've spent money on an architect that is internationally known, money on planning for landscaping. All of this has come to a halt because of the proposed plant that may go in. We understand that there are concerns on both sides, but we believe that this is important enough to submit to the voters and something that could have long lasting impact on our community. Not just our parish, but the entire community as well as our parish. Everything in terms of our parish's development toward this goal has stopped as of now. We are at the point where we are wondering if we will have to go back to square one and search for new property to build our facility or if this will be open to us. We're not sure. So I, I come tonight and I urge you to, and I hope and I'm sure that we will be submitting this to the voters for their consideration. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Father. Other folks here to speak on this item tonight? All right, seeing none. Counselors, you got any questions for Tom just on the procedure elements of this? Counselor Starr?
Yes, Mr. Clerk. Because we're doing this by ordinance and we include the city attorney's explanation, would that be amendable to add or subtract from the city? I get why it would or wouldn't, but would it be permissible to add to the explanation or subtract from it as it's in the ordinance?
I would have to defer to the city attorney on that.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but maybe I do.
I appreciate that. Well, it's a city attorney's explanation and so I don't think that the council could substitute my, you know, duty for a professional legal opinion in that. If there's a potential amendment, I'm happy to consider it, of course. But as you'll see, the explanation is pretty thorough when it just comes to the language of the proposal. Um, but as you'll see, the explanation is pretty thorough when it just comes to the language of the or- proposed ordinance itself. Thank you.
Other questions on this item? Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would maybe ask for a little more of an explanation to folks on procedural. I mean, we're, we obviously could vote no, we're voting yes or no, but we're kind of being, it's being laid out where it's, this is procedural, we're going to vote yes, and there's, uh, I'm not here to argue against that, but maybe the city clerk or the city attorney could talk a little bit more about just exactly what that means procedural, this is kind of being moved as a, well, we're, this is what we do, so. Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
Uh, Counselor Selberg, uh, I would, I called it procedural when I was presenting, and I, um, just in my opinion, believe it is, uh, because the, the statute does state that once it's presented to the governing body, once it's validated, it must be presented to the governing body at the next subsequent, uh, meeting of the governing body, which in this case, given our agenda deadlines and all that stuff, was tonight. Uh, once it's presented, then it shall be put to a vote of the people, and it goes on to further explain in a different part of the um, title, that it'll be set forth, uh, to the voters at the next annual election or the general election, whichever is earlier. There's also, I should say, a provision for special election, uh, presumably if you've passed both of those elections and there's still two years to the first one, uh, for example, but uh, in this case, it is the next election, the general election, and it further goes on to say that, um, the governing body shall certify language to the auditors, it doesn't put that on the election official, which is me. Uh, so that's why you see this particular ordinance before you, uh, tonight. So, it, I, I would say it is procedural in nature. It's certainly, the council could vote how they want, but, um, as I would understand it, and the city attorney could weigh in, I, I do believe you have an obligation.
Yeah, and I can address it as well, and I'll, I'll take it to the 10,000-foot view, which is essentially, when you look at this, this whole process from start to finish, uh, the, the rules are written such that if, um, in this case, it's an initiated measure, it's not a referendum, so this would be a new law, and, um, it's just a method by which the voters can basically, um, step into the shoes of the council and, and bring this forward. And there's a relatively high bar, in this case, it was 6,089 voters, um, that they had to get to sign the petition, and if they do, then that trips the procedure in state law, uh, which basically mandates that if they satisfy all those requirements, uh, there's no basis for denying the opportunity for that vote. Uh, even to the mayor's reference earlier to the fact that we're not, you know, we're not really in the, on the merits of this topic. Uh, that's what comes at a later date, and when the city clerk certified the 6,089 votes, it triggers the state law that says, okay, now it's going to, to that next regularly scheduled election. Again, municipal or general, depending on which is first. And, uh, it is a little unusual to, to have a circumstance where this is up for a vote, but the vote is really relatively academic. But it's, it's the way the state law works in order to protect this process for the people to, to bring it forward.
Well, I appreciate that, appreciate that explanation, and I think the citizens probably do too, and of course, we're putting something in the hands of the voter, and it's, I mean, hard to vote against something like that, but I think that this was something that, I'm glad you explained that, because I've had some questions on it, so, thank you.
Good question.
Other questions on this item? Counselor McCorris.
One follow-up question, thank you, Mr. Mayor, in regards to Counselor Starr's question about the city attorney's explanation. Just a process question of, what do you desire to be the process of engaging around that explanation? Before the next meeting, in the sense of if there's questions of, just on an individual basis, or a couple of counselors meeting, just want to make sure we're not dropping something at the last minute here on August 2nd.
No, I appreciate that. Um, you're, you're welcome to discuss that with me if you have any questions. Again, the, the law provides that, that's basically my duty and my discretion as to how to describe it. You know, i- if you have some questions or concerns, of course, all, my door is always open in that regard. Uh, can be discussed in, in public as well on a forum such as this, as to why it is. Uh, but again, I think what you'll find is it's pretty well aligned with just the proposed ordinance itself. And, of course, we try to stay away, you know, the city is, in effect, a neutral party here. Uh, and so we just try to present the merits of it, uh, ultimately to the voters in a way that they can understand and make an informed decision, uh, with their vote in November.
Other questions on this one tonight? All right, hearing none, I'd take a motion, that'd be to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 2.
So move, Sale.
Second, McCorris.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by McCorris, any discussion amongst the council there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote then.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass six to zero, we'll move to item forty-six.
Item forty-six, a resolution approving the release of the storm sewer easement located in lot B1 Sandy Creek addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, sponsors the mayor.
Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, Brian Wilcox, representing, uh, engineering tonight on a couple items. This storm sewer easement is, a lot of you are familiar with this site, this is the VCP, um, community home, um, property. Um, this storm sewer easement is, um, was kind of, was dedicated by Platts in 1996. Um, there's no facilities located within this easement, uh, doesn't serve any public need, uh, is no longer needed. The approved, um, site for the VCP project kind of indicates that their, uh, approved grading plan kind of shifts all the drainage to the south and west portion of this site, um, so that engineering would request your support to release the easement.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-six?
Good evening, Chester DeYoung. Uh, I appreciate that you are going through the proper steps here to avoid, to avoid this sewer easement. Storm sewer, you feel you no longer need it, but if you take a look at this letter I received from the city, you can see it was-
Chester, this is not related to this topic at all.
No, it is an easement issue though, and the city turned around and vacated the sewer easement.
On this item, is it related to this easement?
It relates to a sewer easement.
It's not, so you can sit down-
I will sit down gladly, you will hear again from you, thank you.
I know we will. Anybody else here to speak on this specific easement? All right, councilors, you got any questions here on this item?
Move approval, Sale.
Second call.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Cole, any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero, next item, please.
Item forty-seven, a resolution approving the release of part of a permanent easement located in vacated South Cambridge Avenue lying adjacent to lot one and block five of Western Heights in the northeast quarter of section 35, track 101 north, range 50 west of the 5th Prime Meridian, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, sponsors the mayor.
Brian.
Good evening again, uh, this easement is located over by Fort, West 41st Street and Western Marion Road, it's on the Peace, Peace Lutheran, um, church site. Sayar Associates is requesting this easement to be released on behalf of the church, um, for an addition project, kind of on the west side of, of the current church, and then also kind of on the north side. Uh, the permanent easement was established when South Cambridge Avenue was vacated in 2009. Uh, all utility companies have received notification and no facilities are located within the easement, um, shown here in this yellow hatchery that, that they're proposing to be released. The permanent easement is no longer needed, and this releasing will, will support the church's, um, expansion projects in the future. Engineering requests your support to release this portion of the easement.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on this specific easement?
Yes, sir, Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. The easement, I'm sure, has been investigated very thoroughly by the engineering department, as they have several other easements in the past. Easement, once they are vacated, are next to impossible to ever get back, according to other city employees I have visited with. So, with this easement and all easements, they should be handled in a manner that everything is considered, so that three years later down the road, four years later down the road, you're not coming back and saying, hey, wait, we need that, and oh, and by the way, give it to us for nothing. Easements don't work that way. Take a look at all the fun the PUC is having right now with the water pipelines, the CO2 pipelines and stuff. They don't get those easements for nothing, they pay for them. So the city wants to vacate this easement, that's great, we don't have a problem with it, they've investigated it. But will sometime in the future, they need that sucker back, and then they're sitting there, oh, shoot, what are we going to do about this easement that we gave away? You guys have a great evening, I'll talk to you again shortly.
Anyone else here to speak on this? All right, council, you got any questions for Brian on this? All right, look for a motion.
Move approval, Sale.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Selberg, any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero, next item?
Item forty-eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Arbor's Edge Homeowners Association, Incorporated, to improve and maintain a stormwater detention facility in the Arbor's Edge addition, sponsors the mayor.
Hey, Aaron.
Good evening, uh, Aaron Fager in the city engineering department. There is a stormwater pond in the Arbor's Edge development near Arrowhead Parkway and Six Mile Road, highlighted on this graphic. The pond is in, the stormwater pond's in disrepair and conveys public drainage, and we're proposing an agreement. It's owned by the homeowners association, we're proposing an agreement, uh, cost share improvements with the homeowners association, uh, to bring the pond back to its original intended usage.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Council, you got any questions for Aaron here?
Move approval.
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole, any discussion, council, on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero, council, we got any new business tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move to our general public input portion of the meeting, three minutes per person, on items we didn't talk about earlier. Chester, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. Tonight, I'm here to give you a good outline of what the city engineering department loves to do. Number one, if you remember the sand volleyball courts, the city engineers approved those, and then what had to happen? Oh, the city commission had to change its requirements so that that didn't happen again. The city engineering department recommended that they vacate some streets. In the process of vacating those streets, they vacated 390 feet of sewer main. And guess what? That 390 feet of sewer main services 125 houses. The city is unable to get to a manhole servicing them because they will be crossing my property. And they just sort of want to ignore this. This all happened back in 2009. In 2012, they discovered their mistake. In 2014, the city zoning, planning, engineers, changed the zoning requirement for the land east of me and put shapes and places into place. This turned around and built a big barricade that they, by their own code, they can't get around, and they're trying to dance with it. That's three mistakes. Just right around my house, that's within 600 feet of my house. Here's one more for you. The land just east of me, if you take a look at it, there is, uh, the red line is actually the property line. The dark line by the little s- red cutout there is actually a sump pump drainage system. Okay, this water runs continuously, year round. This property never had standing water on it before the city engineers allowed the development on the north side of this property. The property owner came in and complained to the engineers, he's complained to city commission. And all he got was bullies, a silent, a deaf ear, nobody wanted to visit with him because the developer was needing that property. But you'd have absolutely no easement, if I can, I'll pull the other picture back up. The city has no easement for the sewer main on this guy's property, they staked the sewer wrong. Rather than being down the property line, it's 10 feet inside, so this gentleman lost 20 feet of sewer easement, he's got to give it to him. You turn around, he has no, the city has no easement for the water running through his property, reduces the sellability. When I talked to Mr. Berg about it, I got him talking somehow, uh, he said, oh, the four he can ever build on that thing, he's got to give the city an easement. That's just a build, and they're using the DNNR as an excuse for this. The day the DNNR was out doing their report, they said, yes, there's, uh, DNR land, but it wasn't enough to stop development. It was not enough to stop development, and yet that's what the engineers claim. You guys have a great night.
Anyone else for public input?
Greetings, I'm David Zalkitis, and I'm back talking about digital billboard safety. I've got some more information that I'd like to, uh, like to give. Digital billboards, hey, they're giant TV screens, big ads, and they're distracting. But that's the whole point. Found a couple of references, one of them says that, uh, you know, the, you get more collisions with these things. That's not surprising, because they're distracting. Here's another reference, it says that the slower your ads are, the safer the roads are. Again, that all makes sense. I found this reference after the last PowerPoint. It's, this recommends that you, uh, keep each image on your giant TV for a minimum of 10 seconds. I did a timing study here in town, I found that one billboard has that 10-second limit, but others don't. Six seconds, a- and that some, some very small signs on, on premises signs go all the way down to three seconds each. And then there's some flashing images too, that's not for zoning, it's against zoning, actually. Okay, so here's one section of city zoning, it says, uh, no flashing is permitted, images should be static, but if you think about that, images have to be static, that means you're only allowed one image per billboard, and that's not what we do. Here's the other city ordinance, this record, this applies to on-premises signs, uh, no flashing allowed there either, but that's not what happens. Couple of recommendations, uh, you, a little bit of changing terminology, adding billboards to the signs, making sure that each image is up for 10 seconds, and it'd be nice to check all the billboards we have in town, because they don't comply with what we have going on now. Like to thank a few people for their assistance, both on this topic and on other topics. It's good to be thanked now and again, and, and of course, you know, there's, there's got to be a pretty image at the end, you'll, you'll enjoy this one. Isn't that cute? Puppy we have in the backyard. And there's another, motherhood is tired, so, uh, evening, everybody.
Anyone else for public input tonight, come on up?
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls. Boy, you guys take a lot of abuse. A lot of, uh, people aren't very, uh, they're rude. I've seen it, especially the last time when I was here. Having only been here two and years and three months, and I've worked a little bit on petitions, we have to go out and get people to sign. And for every one person you get signed, you got two, three more. So I probably talked to 1,500, 2,000 people, and all I hear is, we wished, we wished we lived here. Especially you talk to people in Minnesota, Washington State. You ask them where they're from, whether or not from South Dakota, but I've heard the comment, boy, do we wish we lived in your city, in your state. And, um, so you've been doing a good job, because after all, you know, it's the end product that counts. That's what counts, you know? And, uh, how you compare, everything's competitive, so how you compare with other entities and so on. so on. To get away from that, this is just another book to read. Sure, a lot of you have heard a lot about George Soros. This book was recommended to me, and it's just been updated, and is what to look out for in the future, because he likes to go into entities and cities and whatnot, and he has particular goals, tries to get prosecutors that don't prosecute the law, he tries to get, defund the police movements, he's on to open borders. So I recommend, you know, just for reference, the man behind the curtain, Matt Colombo, or, yeah, Matt Palumbo, and he lists in here all the organizations he supports. He put $18.3 billion aside, and he funds somewhere around 200 organizations. So it's just something that you should be aware of when you see people, different people running in the future. Go through those campaign records and see where the money is coming, and that might tell you what might happen after election time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, seen none. Look for a motion to adjourn us, please.
I move that we adjourn.
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Cole. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.